Okay, I'd like to call this week's city council meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji here.
Councilman Walker here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge.
Here.
Councilman Gilbert.
Here.
For present.
Thank you, and can we all stand now for an invocation by Pastor Christian Michael from Engraved Word Church, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Father, we thank you in Jesus' name for this great city. We're thankful, Lord, for our city leaders. We ask you, Father, for your continued wisdom as they lead and guide our city. Give them the wisdom for decisions. We thank you, Father, that your fear and your dread would rest upon them, that they would not take any of these decisions lightly. We thank you for continuing to prosper our city and keep us safe. We thank you, Father, for the events of this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, item number three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, there's two changes. Under item four D, which shows us being sponsored by the mayor, well, actually, I'll sponsor that item since Mayor Wheaton's absent. And then under item seven A, which is hold a public hearing and consider to declare property surplus, we'll only hold the public hearing and will not consider the actual declaring of surplus until our next meeting.
Okay, so do I have a motion with the changes?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Baji. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Is there any discussion from the public? Any discussion from council? All right, let's vote.
Oh, it's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. And item number four, with appointments proclamation for presentations or awards, item four A Arbor Day proclamation for April 25, 2025. Is that Ms. is that Ms. Elmore?
Excuse me. Thank you, Councilman and Vice Mayor. So the city of Cookeville has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 36 years this year. As part of this selection and celebration and continued commitment, the city has to recognize and celebrate Arbor Day yearly, which is celebrated nationally on the first, the last Friday of April. So this year, the city of Cookeville would like to make a proclamation to also recognize Arbor Day and celebrate it on April 25, 2025.
Thank you. All right, so. You want to go ahead?
Yeah, to the next one.
Yep. All right, so four B, Tree City USA recognition by Tyler Maroney?
Yes, and so we've got Tyler Maroney here with the city, with the state, and he would like to speak about Tree City USA for us. And we also have representatives of the tree board, so they can come up next. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Maroney. I am the partnership coordinator for the Tennessee Division of Forestry, Urban and Community Forestry Program. Thank you for inviting me to be here, to be a part of tonight's city council meeting to recognize the city of Cookeville for 36 years of being a Tree City USA. Also, thank you to the tree board and all the volunteers here today and doing your part for helping with everything throughout the city of Cookeville. Your hard work is very important to our efforts here in urban forestry. With that, I say congratulations to the city of Cookeville for being recognized as a Tree City USA for the 36th year in a row. To be considered for being a Tree City, a city must fulfill four requirements annually from the Arbor Day Foundation. Those requirements are having an active tree ordinance, having a tree care or community advocacy group, celebrating Arbor Day and spending at least $2 per capita on growing and sustaining the urban and community forest. Last year, the city of Cookeville fulfilled all of these requirements while spending $27.18 per capita on tree care and planting 139 trees. Celebrating Arbor Day may be new to some of you. However, it originated in Nebraska in 1872, while Tennessee had its first Arbor Day in 1875. With that said, it is Tennessee's 150th year of Arbor Day recognition, and you all are part of this historic feat. So it is my pleasure to congratulate the city of Cookeville once again for 36 years of being a Tree City, and I wish all of you a happy Arbor Day from the Tennessee Division of Forestry.
Thank you, Ms. Maroney. All right, four C, Friends of the Urban Forest Award. You want to go ahead with that somewhere?
So the city of Cookeville Tree Board would like to present our group award for the 2024 Friends of the Urban Forest. This award was created to annually recognize and honor a local group or business whose actions exhibit a pattern of commitment to the environment or which has made a noteworthy contribution to the urban forest through an education program, a project funding, a self-initiated tree planting or giveaway, or other outreach project. State Farm collaborated with the city of Cookeville and the Arbor Day Foundation in November of 2022 in a tree giveaway event, distributing over 400 trees to local residents for free as part of the continued rebuild for the March 2, 2020 tornado. So tonight, we, the tree board would like to present this award and wish to recognize the State Farm agents who participated, doesn't all of them, but we have Mr. Elwood Irvin and John White here to accept this award. We'd like them to come up and get a photo of the tree board passing off that award to them.
What you gonna speak on?
I thought you were gonna speak. You gonna get a photo with him? Will stand up or?
We do, we should whip, I'm sure.
Okay, yes.
You guys on the front row kind of scoot down.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Four D, consider appointment of city of city of Cookeville representative to the Upper Cumberland Regional Airport Board, sponsored by Mr. Mills.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, the mayor appoints that she'll be appointing Martin E. to serve on the airport board, replacing, I believe his name's Pete Ziegler, whose term has or his term limit has come up. He can only serve two, two times. Is that correct? Darren, I believe that's correct. Anyway, she's appointing Martin E., and the requirement is the council must confirm the mayor's appointment to the airport board. I'd recommend your confirmation of the appointment of Martin E. to the airport board.
All right, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Baji, second by Councilman Walker. Any comments? Do I have to do comment from, any comments from the public? Any comments? Anybody want to say anything? Everybody good? I know Mr. E. I'm happy to have him on board. He's a really good guy. All right, let's vote.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five, old business, consider approval amendments of council meeting held on March 6, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilbert.
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Any discussion from council? All right, let's vote.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. And six, consent agenda, consider approval of change order number two for fire station number two and three. Consider approval of cost overage for Saxtoni sidewalk installation cost share agreement. Consider correction of clerical error on the leisure service department surplus memo approved at the 12:05 2024 city council meeting. And consider declaring a surplus of various equipment and miscellaneous items. Consider awarding bid for one 2024 bucket truck utilizing the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative. And then F, consider approval awarding bids for lawn maintenance. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilman Gilbert, and second by Councilman Walker. And discussion from the public? All right, let's vote.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. New business, seven A, hold a public hearing as surplus, a portion, to surplus a portion of the property located at 125 Chestnut Avenue. Require a request submitted by Cookville Regional Medical Center. This is Mr. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Council members, here's the general location of this property subject to the surplus request. The property is identified as a portion of parcel 5.01 on tax map 53B, Group T. The total parcel contains approximately 1.57 acres. This property is owned MS Medical Services, as is the adjacent property also included in this transfer to the east, which is the location of Cookeville Pediatrics. Submitted survey by CRMC depicts 0.26 or approximately 10,616 square feet of the subject property to be declared as surplus for purchase by the adjacent Cookeville Pediatrics property. The hospital submitted a memo stating the CRMC Board of Trustees has determined the portion of the subject property was no longer needed for CRMC use and approved the surplus of the subject property as per the CRMC charter. The memo further states CRMC's request that the city council approve the surplus and sell to Cookeville Pediatrics. A value was established for this surplus of $7.61 per square foot or a total sales price of $80,787.76. The packet also included a signed resolution from the CRMC Board of Trustees to accompany the request. The submitted survey depicts a 50-foot access easement running through the area. No utilities are currently present. The area does include a portion of the stormwater facilities for the CRMC daycare, and that will need to be relocated to their property or included in an easement when this property is transferred. As we discussed Monday, review of the municipal code and the private act for CRMC requires the city council to hold a public hearing on a surplus property request from the hospital and further requires unanimous unanimous approval of the council. So my recommendation is to just hold our public hearing, and then we postpone action until the full council is present to consider this. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. Is there any public comment?
Why don't you open the public?
Oh, I'm gonna announce, announce. I'm gonna open this up for a public comment. Is there any public, is there any comment from the public, public hearing? I see none. Anybody from the city council? All right, so we go on to seven. Close the public hearing, and now we'll go to seven B. Hold a public hearing, consider on the first reading ordinance, oh, 25-03-01 amendments to the official street map. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council. Amendments to the official street map are necessary due to the construction of six new streets and the closure of one city street in 2024. This includes approximately 4,135 linear feet or 0.78 miles of streets proposed for addition to our official street map. Approximately 1,136 linear feet or .22 miles are proposed for removal from the official street map. The purpose of the official street map is to depict the streets for which the city of Cookeville is responsible for maintenance and to reflect the official names of those streets. The recommended amendments are included in your information packet. This includes Link's Drive, Nelson Way, which were constructed as part of the Reserve at the Country Club. Stewart Cemetery Road was constructed off Highlands Park Boulevard to provide access to Stewart Cemetery, with the old street being closed. Conifer Lane, Rock Corn Road, and Joining Avenue were constructed as part of the Timberwafel Residential subdivision. Well, my recommendation is approval of the amendments to the official street map as recommended by the planning commission. Happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Baji. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mr. Gilbert, and I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any comment from the council? All right, let's vote.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
All right, seven C, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance, zero, 0250302 to rezone property on West Broad Street and Ridge Dell Drive from RS20 Single Family Residential to CL Local Commercial. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Here is the general location of the property proposed for rezoning. Here is a location map identifying this area. Here's an aerial view. The subject properties are identified as a portion of parcel 185 and parcel 182 on tax map 39. The the area consists of approximately 4.72 acres. The rezoning request, including street right-of-way, consists of approximately 5.64 acres. Both properties are currently split-zoned, CL and RS20. Parcel 182 is the current location of the Putnam County Veterans Service Office. Parcel 185 is currently a vacant track. The remaining portions of both of these parcels are zone commercial. Our future land use plan depicts the subject properties as best suited for mixed-use, commercial, industrial uses. The CL designation is compliant with this future land use designation. Both properties have frontage on West Broad Street, which is classified as a major arterial street. All surrounding property in the area is on commercial or manufacturing. There is an aerial view. This is the eastern portion of the Putnam Veterans property where they have completed the small park they've built there. And the remaining portion is the wooded area you see behind that. That's located to the south. So my recommendation is approval of this rezoning request as recommended by the planning commission. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Baji. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker, and I'm gonna open this up for public hearing. Is there any comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna close it. Anything from the council? Nothing. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. All right, seven D, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance, 025-03-03 to rezone property at 211 South Jefferson Avenue from CR to CG. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Vice Mayor, here is a general location of the this property, which is under consideration for rezoning. Here is a location map on the corner of Henley Drive and South Jefferson Avenue, and here's our aerial view. The subject property is identified as parcel 81.08 on tax map 66. The parcel consists of approximately 1.2 acres. The rezoning request, including street right-ofways, would consist of 1.55 acres. The property is zoned CR Regional Commercial, as is the adjacent property to the west. The property is bordered by CG General Commercial to the northeast and south. The CR district is intended for medium to large-scale commercial operations of predominantly regional nature. The CG district is intended for moderate and larger-sized offices, personal and business services, and general retail businesses. Our future land use plan designates this area as best suited for regional commercial uses. South Jefferson Avenue is predominantly zoned CG General Commercial. The CG district is compliant with the land use designation and would provide continuity with the tracks that have frontage along South Jefferson Avenue. Oh, here's an aerial view of this lot. This is, like I said, on the corner of Henley and South Jefferson. That's looking back to the north. My recommendation is approval of the request as recommended by the planning commission. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do I have a motion? A move to approve by Councilman Walker. Do I have a second?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Gilbert. Now we'll open up the public hearing. Is there any comments? Seeing no comments, we'll close it. Any discussion from the council? None? All right.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Seven E, consider approval of amendments to Article Three, membership of the Tennessee Central Rail Trail Authority bylaws. Mr. James.
Mr. Vice Mayor, council, the Central Rail Trail Authorities requesting approval of an amendment to their bylaws to increase its membership from eight to nine members. The proposed ninth member would be nominated by the Friends of the Tennessee Central Trail and ratified by the authority. The authority would like to have representation from the Friends of the Trail on the board. The amendment has been approved by the authority and by the Putnam County Commission. It must still be approved by the Town of Allgood. The participants in this are Putnam County, Cookeville, and the Town of Allgood, and I'd recommend for your approval of authority's amendment to the bylaws as requested.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Councilman Walker and second by Councilman Baji. Open any public comment? Seeing none, any council comment? No? All right, let's vote.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Seven F, consider authorizing city manager to enter into an engineering agreement to replace electrical equipment at city hall. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Vice Mayor, council, as we discussed on Monday at our work session, the main electrical service here in city hall is in need of replacement. Recently, we, in a test of our generator for a potential power outage, it was determined that the main switchgear will not operate, and that's not a good thing. We believe the switchgear and breakers in the building's electrical service are the original components, which would make them more than 60 years of age. The cost of replacing the electrical service is estimated to exceed $100,000. So to get started, I'm requesting your approval of a contract with Moffett Loftus Engineering to provide engineering services for the design, building, construction, administration of the replacement of the city hall's main electrical service. The total cost for this contract is $14,500. Again, I recommend for your approval. I'd also like to thank Electric Division Energy Director Carol Haney for all his work and help me get this together, but I would request your approval of this contract.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Baji, second by Councilman Walker. Any public discussion? Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote.
Oh, that's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Seven G, consider approval to purchase five Curix Vision AI system, smart city, ITS server and software, intersection detection camera, and accessories for traffic division utilizing the Byboard Processing Cooperative contract. Ms. Mary Betts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. So the Public Works Department Traffic Division is seeking your approval for the purchase of five Curix Vision AI systems. These are the smart city ITS servers and software. This will be through the Byboard purchasing agreement. In addition, we will be purchasing the camera systems, the mounts, and the accessories for those five intersections as well. This was a budgeted item for the transportation improvements for the city to be placed at five intersections, hopefully within either the Jefferson or Willow corridor, and the total cost for this purchase is $77,693, which is under the budgeted amount. The Curix Smart City ITS is an AI-enabled solution for traffic detection monitoring and management at signalized intersections. It uses cameras and AI to detect vehicles within the intersection. It tracks all turning and through movements to count and determine traffic volume within a corridor, and it extracts detailed traffic analytics and generates reports and real-time data. The intent of this system is to optimize the flow of traffic through an entire corridor of signals, not just one standalone intersection. This system works with our existing traffic cabinets, monitors, and controllers, and I would request your approval. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Elrod. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I think that's everybody. So first by Mr. Councilman Gilbert, second by Councilman Walker, and third by Councilman Baji. Everybody's in favor of this. Favorite this. Do I have any public?
Can you get a bunch tomorrow?
Six to eight weeks now. Six to eight weeks lead to delivery.
No public comment? Well, we've already talked about it.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, with our north, south corridors being state highways, our ability to mitigate congestion is challenging sometimes, and what this is, I really feel this is an innovative, outside-the-box approach to try and mitigate some of that traffic congestion, address it, while T-Doc continues to make progress on the permanent solutions. So I appreciate your hard work on that and research.
Well, thank you for bearing with us.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Baji. I think I'm clear with that. I do also think it's important for everybody to understand this gives us operational control of these intersections much better than we have now. Not just like AI is taking over or anything. I think it's really important to understand, like, this gets us on time and on patrol back at public works with these red lights. And that's, that's a very important thing. And then where that goes with AI and how that develops down the road, we get to be one of the first cities that are trying this, figuring this out, and that can be really great for our city, and I'm very excited to be on the on the front end of something, figuring something out, then, then standing back and having problems and waiting in the wind. So I think it's very good for us to have been, have been proactive, and thank you for all your hard work and research.
Thank you, guys, for helping us to look at the demos. I think you have all set through presentations, so I think we're ready to move forward.
I think it's worth noting, just build on that, that this is, this is the beginning of, this is, this sets us up. This is an engineering platform that, that, you know, as, as AI helps and assists our, our, our public works and traffic departments, and this works like we think it will. This will be a network that we, we can build upon, and it will eventually, you know, canvas the city, and that's kind of the name of the game now, with the right-of-way being as expensive as it is. It's how can we, how can we convey more traffic through the existing infrastructure that we have right now, and this is, this, we're all excited about seeing how this can do that.
We are, and we're one of few doing this, right?
Very few, yes. That's why it was so hard to do our research and try to reach out to other cities, because very few have this full AI working and tested it and vetted it for multiple years. It's just, it's early.
So few, in fact, that, John Ford News, I guess.
We've done the story.
So they're watching us, so don't mess it up. No.
Not to be a doubter on this, but I don't want to pamper everybody's expectations. We're one of the first in the nation, so don't expect six months from now to have We're one of the first in the nation, so don't expect six months from now to have miracle traffic flows. This is a learning curve that's going to take a while before we see any significant improvement, so.
Yeah.
But the important point is, we're on the leading edge of this. But this is not an instant resolution to our traffic issues.
Uh, this, this does give us twenty-four seven real-time data to send to T-Dot to say, hey, this is real-time data, the last time you were out here and did a three-week count on it, it wasn't accurate, you were in the middle of a spring break or something. So this is twenty-four seven data that we can just send to T-Dot, and so they can see constant data to see how to help us fix these intersections as well.
And this will give us a good view of, because it's going to expand down there where we possibly going to put it, right? So this will help us to determine, we got, we got a year and a half. So that'll be good for that section of town. Well, thank you. All right, well, let's, let's vote. I don't think we did, we talked.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seven H, consider authorizing city manager to enter into a professional service agreement with Thomas M. Barnes P.E. Energy Department. This is Mr. Carl Haney.
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, this agreement provides consultant engineering for various substation projects that we've identified for this coming year. We've negotiated a not-to-exceed with Tom Barnes consultant for thirty-five thousand dollars, and I would recommend your approval.
Thanks, sir, do I have a motion?
So moved.
First by Councilman Gilbert, second by Councilman Baji. Do I have any public discussion? Seeing none, any city?
Thanks for keeping the light on. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You do a good job, thanks, sir. All right, let's vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Seven I, consider contract renewal of the two thousand twenty-one water treatment plant lagoon clean-out project. Mr. Barry Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this slide shows the water plant there, south of the Water Plant Road, and the lagoons about the center of the slide there. The lagoons have to be cleaned out about every other year. We bid a project in two thousand twenty-one, it had two renewals to the contract allow us to do this. So this asking for renewal, this contract will be for five hundred thousand dollars. We'll embed it in two thousand twenty-one. The bid price was five hundred and twenty-four thousand, we had two bidders at that time. This contract, as I say, will be five hundred thousand, as was the first original contract and the renewal, and I recommend your approval.
Thanks, sir, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Gilbert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. Any public discussion? Any council discussion? All right, let's vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Seven J, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a change order, number two, for two thousand twenty-three South Jefferson Avenue Waterline Treatment I Ford I forty to Reagan Street. Mr. Turner.
That South Jefferson Waterline Project does have some sewer in the project, and we have an issue on South Walnut Avenue that shows we're just south of Stevens, Stevens Street. The addition of a couple of subdivisions over there have got us looking at that a little harder. The six-inch sewer line there, and we need to replace it, upsize it to eight inch. We need to replace the taps there. Some of those are orange berds, some concrete. So this would involve replacing four hundred and seventy-five feet of main, installing nineteen laterals and six hundred and seventy feet of lateral. The cost of this change order is two hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. It would add twenty-one days to the contract and make the new contract price six million five hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, and I recommend your approval. And this shows the change order.
Thanks, sir, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Baji, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any public comment? Any council comment?
I got a question. What kind of capacity does this give us upstream or downstream once we replace this section? Does it, or does it allow us to meet that?
It's, it doesn't really increase our capacity over the six inch. The state's minimum for sewer line is eight inch. So when we replace it, we need to go to eight inch. So it's not really a problem of capacity, it's just the material and shape of that line. But rehabbing, contractors won't rehab a six-inch line either, so we have to go to eight inch.
Sorry, any other comment? All right, thanks, sir, let's go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Seven K, thank you, sir. Seven K, consider approval of proposal for banking services for all departments and authorizing the city manager to execute a four-year bank service agreement. Ms. M.
Councilmember. We recently requested proposals on banking services for the city. We have about thirty-two separate bank accounts that we use citywide, that includes all the utilities. We received proposals from eight banks, First Bank, who is our current provider, Regions Bank, First Horizon Bank, US Bank, Wilson Bank and Trust, American Bank and Trust, Smart Bank, and One Bank. We currently have a four-year contract with First Bank, which will be expiring next month. We have asked for proposals for banking services back in two thousand ten, two thousand fifteen, and the last time was in two thousand and twenty-one. So we go through this process about every four or five years. Requirements included that the bank have a local branch in Cookeville, be a member of the State of Tennessee's Bank Collateral Pool, provide all the online banking services needed, and pay interest on funds indexed to the Fed Funds Rate. Being a member of the collateral pool requires the bank to pledge securities to collateralize public funds, and the state administers that program. The services we require include the ability daily to transfer funds, do ACH debits and credits, check-in ACH positive pay services, wire transfers, and remote deposit capture. After reviewing all the proposals received, we are recommending using Regions Bank for our banking services. Their proposal provides all the services we need, and using the current Fed Funds Rate provides the greatest net interest earnings to the city. Service charges will vary based on transaction types and volume. Interest earnings rate will be the target Fed Funds less twenty-five basis points, which currently would be four point two five percent. And we have used Regions Bank for this service for many years prior to two thousand twenty-one. And if I could publicly, publicly acknowledge our current provider, First Bank, they have been a strong partner with us the last four years, and we've been very pleased with the service they have provided us. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but we request your approval that the city manager execute a four-year agreement with Regions Bank.
Thank you, ma'am, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Baji, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Is there any public comment? Any council comment?
I know this was a lot of work, thank you for that. And then also like to publicly thank all the banks that proposed. There's, there's not a bad one on this list, and we're lucky to have them all.
Yes, we had, this is the first time where we had banks actually submit a proposal, so.
Thank you to all them.
Yeah.
Thanks for all the hard work you're going to have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, let's vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, seven L, consider approval of audit contract for fiscal year in June two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Jean. One more time.
Vice Mayor and Councilmen, Blankenship CPA Group has performed our audit since fiscal year twenty-one. I'm requesting your permission to engage them to perform the FY twenty-five audit. The base audit fee is fifty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. It's a seventeen hundred dollar increase over last year. Their travel and out-of-pocket is three thousand two hundred and fifty, just an increase of two hundred and fifty dollars. The single audit fee is five thousand dollars for the first major program, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty for each additional major program. The crosswalk for the controllers chart of accounts is going to stay at two thousand dollars this year. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilbert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker, is there any discussion from the public? Any from council? All right, let's vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. Seven M, consider approval, approval contract for SamSarah to provide GPS and dash cameras. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, as you're aware, we have been exploring acquiring GPS systems for our city vehicles and forward-facing cameras for some of our larger vehicles. Such systems are utilized by many cities across the country. The data that can be collected can be used to better route service vehicles. It discourages misuse of city vehicles, and cameras have proven to provide cities, protect cities from false claims. For the last several months, we've been in a trial period with SamSarah for cameras on our garbage trucks and GPS on a handful of other city vehicles. Based on the results of the trial, we are recommending we fully implement GPS systems for all city vehicles and forward-facing cameras for forty-two vehicles. Our chief technology officer, Steve Quarter, and I've spent several weeks evaluating the best path forward, and I'm recommending for your approval a statewide contract with SamSarah to provide GPS hardware accessories and licenses for two hundred and thirty-five vehicles and forward-facing dash cameras for forty-two vehicles for a period of three years and three months. The cost for the first three months, which would end this fiscal year, would be thirteen thousand thirty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, and then annually thereafter for three years, forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. SamSarah indicates that the contract includes a provision allowing us to cancel the contract if we come across some other different services that we want to explore or consider with a penalty of a payment for sixty days of service. And also I want to note, as you consume this for approval, that this contract does not include the police department. The police department has their own GPS system, but this would be for all the, all other departments, including the utilities, and I would recommend for your approval.
Thank you, sir, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Gilbert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji, do I have any public comment? Counsel comment? Seeing none, all right, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Seven N, consider purchase of a custom-designed splash pad for Kane Creek Park from Recreational Concepts utilizing Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Contract with Landscape Structures. Mr. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Members of council, as you know, our Leisure Services Department's state system-wide master plan adopted in two thousand one includes a splash pad and a playground at Kane Creek Park adjacent to the pickleball courts that are currently under construction. This item and the following item on tonight's agenda are asking your approval to move forward with these new amenities at Kane Creek. This particular item is a request for approval of a unique and custom-designed splash pad that would be purchased from Recreational Concepts through a Sourcewell Cooperative Contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated. As you can see on the proposal, the purchase price, including installation, is one million three hundred forty-four thousand three hundred, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. I'd like to share with you some images of the splash pad. Here's the overall layout showing the circular design with the Tennessee Tri-Star emblem on the deck. Cannilevered shade structures with benches and numerous interactive water features. Another view here showing the rocket splash, the mushroom rain curtain, some of the slides and the different levels to the play features. This is a view from the opposite side, it shows lower-intensity ground sprays along the perimeter, suitable for younger children. And here is a nice, large slide feature appropriate for use by multiple participants at the same time. And finally, an overhead view showing the age-appropriate zones from low-intensity water features for very young children to older kids more comfortable with a higher volume of water. This splash pad operates using a recirculating treated water and is motion-activated by users so that it doesn't spray continuously. This will be a great addition to Kane Creek Park and will be heavily used in the summer months, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, sir, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilbert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker, any public discussion? Exciting. Counsel, any public discussion? All right, let's vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Seven O, consider purchase of a new playground for Kane Creek Park from Recreational Concepts utilizing the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Contract with Landscape Structure. Mr. Rick Woods.
Thank you again, Mr. Vice Mayor. This item is for consideration of a new playground that would be across the sidewalk from the splash pad that we just talked about. This purchase from Recreational Concepts also utilizes the Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement with Landscape Structures and with Forever Lawn. There are two proposals you have before you. The first is for the purchase and installation of the play equipment totaling two hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred twenty dollars and twelve cents. And the second proposal is for the very attractive safety surfacing for playgrounds called Forever Lawn, a surface that we have used at West End Park Playground and one of the playgrounds at Kane Creek Park at the new Hilltop, new playground at the Hilltop Shelter. The Forever Lawn price is one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty cents, and again, that is installed. That brings a total of the fifty-eight hundred square foot playground project with equipment and surfacing to four hundred forty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-two cents. Here is the layout of that particular playground, which includes several standalone features, a six-unit swing bay and multi-level climber and slide unit. Also depicts there the different age range, two to five-year-olds and five to twelve-year-olds. Here is a rendering of that playground. The dark green area is the artificial grass, the Forever Lawn surfacing that is much more maintenance-friendly and cleaner than mulch or sand or the poured-in-place surfaces. This is another great addition to the property and will be very popular year-round. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, sir, do I have a motion?
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Walker and a second by Councilman Baji. Any comment from the public? Any from the council?
I've got a question for you, on where we are using this currently. Do you find that there's actually, with the decrease in maintenance costs and stuff, because you're using this artificial service, that you find that at some point it almost pays for itself after certain years? Or is there a cost of ownership for something like this as well?
The, the other surfaces that we have right now, the, the only comparison really is with the poured-in-place service like we have at the heart of the city playground, which is, we found now for over ten years, it gets really dry, brittle starts splitting, and we have areas that we have to go back and continually replace. It's not incredibly expensive to replace it, but it's hard to keep up with it. And so that's an ongoing maintenance issue. Same is true with our other playgrounds, which mostly are mulch. We do have some sand playgrounds, but mostly mulch. These playgrounds are much, much safer in terms of fall protection. They're much better for that, and they're, you cannot keep a mulch playground with enough loose mulch in it to be, to meet the safety standards. So these are, these are much, much better.
Thanks. Well, thank you for all your hard, hard work. I know my kids will be excited once this is up and running, when we thinking about that.
Up and running? Well, I'll be coming back to you next council meeting with another project that's related to this.
You were the last one.
But it'll be, it'll be in the fall, we hope.
I appreciate it, that's a lot of hard work, so thank you, sir.
Hi, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to say something to, and Rick and I were talking earlier today, and I want to, this is meant as a compliment to the council, and I don't remember in the history of the city that we've had this many large projects going underway with leisure services. And that's a testament to this council, I mean, we're doing the major renovations at CPAC. We've got I mean, we're doing the major renovations at CPAC. We've got a 1.5 or $2 million addition to Kane Creek Park, and then we've got this, and I just think that's a testament to our commitment to our community, to our youth in our community, to have activities. And I know, Rick and I, we've talked about this, is this is just the golden years, I guess, for, for leisure services, and I'm really happy these things are happening. I also want to just take a moment to thank the family of Joel Cowan, who passed away on this past weekend. Again, he's, because of him, we have nearly fifty acres, Rick, that we'll be able to do even more and pretty much to Kane Creek Park. So again, I want to thank the council and also Rick and Chad and all their hard work in keeping all these projects going.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, these two projects in tandem will be a great addition to our park. Very excited about the splash pad. I think it's a great way to offer a water feature to our city. Don't beat your expectations up. It won't be ready this summer. It'll be next summer for the water park. I think everybody understands that. So much fun. But very, for the splash pad, thank you. Much cheaper than a water park. But we're very excited to have this come to Kane Creek Park, and I'm excited to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, let's, let's vote. Do we vote? We didn't vote. Let's vote.
Maybe. A vote's correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Number eight, is there any citizens that would like to request a hearing from City Council? Seeing none, anybody, council, city manager, making a comment?
Good, ma'am.
Good night, you guys.
My, my confidence.
You made your, well, since the mayor's, I, I do have a comment just real quick. As you know, a lot of people say on Facebook, the newspaper and everything, our, I go to church at Engraft and Word, and our sard fell. I guess we blew the shafar too hard, and I don't know what happened, but it was just, it just freak accident. And I just want to thank everybody from Public Works, Police, Fire, and everybody that reached out. I know even Chad over at Leisure Service, he reached out, just, hey, what can we do to help? It was, it was great to see the community come together like that, but thank you to everybody. Thank God nobody was hurt. Nobody was walking under it. We've watched the video. I mean, it's just a freak accident. Even the Tesla only had one little dent in it, so that's good. But I just want to thank everybody for everything, and then also thank JNS Construction for, they came out, their emergency crew came out and got that thing cleared up. Because I know there are a lot of comments on Facebook about the street being closed down, and people a little frustrated with that, but JNS helped all that, so I think we can thank them. They got it up and running this morning, and they were done by 12:00 PM, or 12:00 AM this morning, so it was back up and running. So again, thank you, everybody, for reaching out and, and just seeing what was going on, so thank you. And that's all. Meeting adjourned.